Good evening, welcome. This is the scheduled Ashland Planning Board meeting of June twenty seventh in the Selectman's Meeting Room. We unfortunately do not have quorum tonight due to more members than we thought being out of town, and we apologize for that. So, most of the items that were scheduled for tonight are going to have to be continued to our next meeting on July eleventh, that is Thursday, July eleventh. To start with, there was a, and so this is, legally, this is not a planning board meeting, just for anyone questioning, but we are being broadcast and recorded on WACA, so people at home also know what's going on. The first item that we had was a public hearing on the village at Clock Town at twelve Union Street. This is a development adjacent to the planned public safety building, and the developer had requested a continuance anyway. Let's see, when did they request the continuance to?
July twenty fifth.
July twenty fifth.
Okay, I believe since this meeting is being canceled, that will technically be on the agenda for the eleventh, and on the eleventh, we will continue it to the twenty-fifth, because we have to follow procedure. So that is what we anticipate have happening. We do have a scheduled public discussion on Lot Two of the Rail Transit District. This was scheduled as an informal discussion. We currently don't have a application for a permit before the planning board. We do not have a specific zoning change before the planning board. It is just a discussion. Since it is just a discussion, we can go ahead and have that discussion tonight. It's just, we're just talking. It would be nice if we had more of the planning board here. We may, the developer who's considering this may decide they want to postpone the discussion until they actually have a quorum of the planning board, but we can also talk about, you know, where they are and what's going on with that. So at least, we can have, we can have a conversation there. We also had a subdivision approval on Whittamore Estates, where they wanted us to endorse the subdivision plans. That will be, we discussed that at our previous meeting, and we will again discuss that on July eleventh. We also have three approval-not-required applications. These are where somebody, typically where somebody owns some land and wants to add or remove or move lot lines. And generally, the planning board reviews that and sees that if they say they're creating a buildable lot, that buildable lot meets all the zoning requirements. If they say they're not building a, creating a buildable lot, they generally are allowed to do that, and if it meets the legal requirements, we sign it and say, you don't need to go through a subdivision process on that. And that's usually a fairly administrative process. These were at one hundred Fountain Street, three ten Pond Street, and thirty-one Franklin Road. We also had reports from board members and the town planner.
So the A and Rs will be delayed?
Those will be on July eleventh.
Yeah.
Yeah. So that is what we have. I apologize that we can't take any actual action, but if we want to talk about Lot Two on the Rail Transit District, we are being televised for the people at home, and we can have a discussion. So I will, I will go ahead and run the discussion as if I were chairing a meeting, even though it's not a formal meeting.
I'm happy to discuss, I'm happy to do it informally. I'm here, so I have a presentation, but that's up to, it sounds like people are running, but you guys, you tell me, I'm happy, I mean, I'm happy to do it twice.
Well, we may need to do it twice, but why don't, why don't you do it, and then the people, people who are here and people who are watching at home can find out what's going on, because more information, the better.
If nothing else, it can be an infomercial for the town.
So. I know there's a lot of controversy over this, as to whether or not this is the right approach.
While we're waiting.
Again, I do apologize that we didn't know we wouldn't have quorum until the last minute.
These are what you're gonna see on the screen, but they're handouts.
Thank you.
Yep.
Did you give an electronic copy to the planning office, too? It'd be nice if, if it's convenient.
I have it, I have it, it's in the computer, so you might have it anyways, so we'd get to you before the end of the night, that's fine. For anybody else who's here, I have these handouts, I know that nobody else is gonna be using them. Everybody have them? Okay, perfect, okay. All right, so we gotta wait for this to power up. I don't know what.
Oh, the projector's working. Is your computer on?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh.
There it goes, maybe it's.
Oh, there was something.
Okay.
Yeah, UGC plan book.
Yeah, okay, so we're gonna go to here. Yeah, we'll get there. Yeah, we'll get there, I think. A little technical difficulty here, Peter. Peter, wait here for two seconds.
Can escape.
Yep.
Well, there you go.
Yeah, it's not the one I'm, it's not really the one I'm looking for, though.
Don't want to?
Let's see if I can get this one to work.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, there we go. So now I gotta go there, and I wanna go, I can't get this thing, it's not really working. It's not the one. Where are we going here? That should be.
Planning board presentation, that's it, PowerPoint. Home, Core, and Dreams.
Yeah, that's it, uh, all right, let's see if we can get it to go.
Yeah, it's in PowerPoint.
Yeah, okay, there's, I don't know why, I don't know why it's doing what it's doing, but the taglines are gonna be a little screwed up, but we'll see.
Go to slides, don't go to slides, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna get it.
Okay, and then how do we get to, how do we open up this, how do I open it up? So it's, oh, there you go, okay, I forgot, I'm looking at it differently, okay. Okay, we're good, okay. Sorry for the difficulty.
And then this is your.
And I have my pointer, okay. Yeah, sorry about that. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Are we ready to go?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Tom Powers, I'm from Powers Realty Development and Consulting, and I am the project manager and consultant to the United Group. The United Group is based in Troy, New York, and Michael Usalini is the chairman. The company has been in existence since nineteen seventy-two, and they are a fully vertically-integrated real estate company, and they build senior, active adult, independent living, multifamily, commercial office, affordable housing, senior affordable housing, senior market rate housing. They're currently doing development in, in Florida, New York, Georgia, Colorado, and this would be their first project in Massachusetts. So they're very excited about it, and I'm here tonight to tell you a little bit more about it. So with that.
Let's see if we can get to the next show, get to the.
Generally, as everybody knows, Lot Two is in, is in a Rail Transit District. It's approximately a thirty-eight acre site, and United is proposing to build a hundred and eighty-unit senior active adult independent Class A development for senior fifty-five and older only, active adult independent in Class A, you know, Class A development. In terms of UGC, like I said, they were founded and established in seventy-two, they're vertically-integrated, they've completed over three billion dollars in commercial real estate since they were founded. They have three thousand active adult independent light and affordable senior housing apartments. They have twenty thousand multifamily apartments that they've developed over the course of, since nineteen seventy-two. They're also in the senior, or the student housing business. They have over, they've built over five thousand units, they have over two million square feet of commercial office space, and they are a soup-to-nuts type of development company, so they are involved in site analysis, acquisitions, permits, permits and approvals, construction management, marketing, leasing, property management, investment sales, and they also have a broker-dealer license for raising capital. They are, as I said, doing business in New York, Massachusetts, Georgia, Florida, Georgia, Florida, and Colorado, and pretty much told you what they're, you know, what they're doing.
So, just a question.
Yes.
So, is the overall model for the United Group, you guys seem to, from beginning to end, can develop it, do you, do you typically hold, own the properties?
Yes.
And is rental?
They have, they have a couple of different models, but they, they, they build and own, they build and sell and manage, or they just will hold, you know, indefinitely, and it depends on the capital that, that comes into the project. This particular project, they're anticipating and holding it. I can give, this is a project that I'm gonna show you, which is called Glenmont Abbey in upstate New York. They built it in two thousand fifteen, they recently sold it, and they have, they were retained as a third-party manager, and they have, they have a management system, which is really the glue for these, for this product that they have. So it's, so holding on to the management is important.
Soup-to-nuts property, property development and management company?
Yes, yep. They have, they have three hundred people currently employed, so it's a, it's a big company.
The total company's three hundred people?
Yes, yep, and that's in, in the various states.
Got it.
Okay. In terms of, in terms of myself, so I'm the project manager, I have not been before the board before, but I've been involved directly and indirectly in the Rail Transit District going back to two thousand, November two thousand and thirteen, when Tony Skiavi was the town manager, and I worked with the owner of the, of this property, who's the seller, and in negotiating both the master development agreement for water and sewer for the RTD. I was also involved representing the owner with the Massworks grant. I was the procuring cause for bringing Campagnelli-Thorn dyke into the transaction to build the three hundred and ninety-eight apartment units. I consulted with Gainer on the solar energy, Citizens Energy Solar, Solar Array, and now I'm working with the United Group as their project manager to do all the permitting and get all the approvals and go forward with it, if we can get to that point. I've been in the real estate business for over thirty years, I've worked for various companies in commercial real estate, from acquisitions through development, commercial office buildings, acquisitions in Florida, Baltimore, Maryland, Texas, so I've been basically involved in all different sort of aspects of real estate and permitting and In terms of, you know, the United Group, I'm gonna take you through a couple of slides of a current project that they, well, this is, this is actually the project that they just sold, Glenmont Abbey. It is in Glenmont, New York, and it's, it was a total, twenty-three million dollar investment. It's three buildings, four stories, hundred and forty-eight units in an eighty-five hundred square foot clubhouse, was built in two thousand fifteen, recently sold. The clubhouse includes a management office, indoor pool, health club, yoga studio, TV, theater room, salon, card game room, and it's got a full kitchen. I don't know if anybody has been in the, the Cirrus Apartment Clubhouse, but if you've been in there, it's, you know, it's probably, will be a little bit grander than that, than that clubhouse itself. Just gonna take you through some quick slides, these are, these are typical slides which are in your presentation. That's the function room, the game room, game, great room here with the fireplace, indoor swimming pool. Seniors are big on aquatics, so they run aquatics, you know, swimming lessons, et cetera, on a regular basis. They have an indoor theater. Indoor health club, so they have a yoga studio, all the Nautilus equipment and aerobic equipment. They have a salon primarily for the ladies, but it also serves as a barber shop for the gentlemen. And once again, this is a different, a different project, Skyler Commons, but it's same thing, card room, and these are the type, the types of finishes that you would see in, in the development, and they're the type of the finishes that you would see in what we are now calling Arbella at Ashland, which would be the project that we're talking about. The, the project itself that we're proposing would include thirty-six townhomes spread out across the project, and, you know, this is just the one example, we will get you better elevations and pictures at a later date, but this is the last, this one I could just grab, grab to put into this presentation for today. In terms of the management company, United has this award-winning program called the SUN Program. It's what I was talking about earlier, it's the glue that, that, that keeps the community active and involved, so you're not getting just, you know, an apartment complex with, with a, with a clubhouse. You have people that work in the, on the management team that are actually involved with the community, interacting with the tenants, the residents, and this is a program that keeps people moving and keeps them active. Average age in, in a United development is approximately seventy-five years old, so these are very, what we'll call, mobile, active people, and, you know, in terms of our demographics, we're looking at somewhere in the neighborhood of, I believe, potential residents, tenants, in the neighborhood of like seventeen hundred people within a ten-mile radius of Ashland. So we've looked at it from a one, three, five, and going out to ten miles, and we think there's, you know, you know, approximately seventeen hundred prospects that are out there. So, so the SUN Program, it's an award-winning program, it's been very successful, it's very popular, and it's really the glue behind what, what Ashland, or what, what United does. So, it's a seven-pronged program, so it's health and fitness and wellness, it's finance, legal, administrative, education and lifelong learning, fun and recreation, convenience and economics, community and friendship, safety and security. So, these are all the different programs that are offered to the tenants, and they are included, so they're not paying extra for them, so it's a big benefit. You know, I mean, if there's, you know, if they're gonna set up an, you know, a trip to Boston, or to a Red Sox game, or Celtics games, obviously they're paying for that type of stuff, but generally speaking, you know, all the things that are offered in the club, in the clubhouse are, are part of the rent, per se, okay? This is just an example, they publish a monthly calendar, which talks about, you know, different activities on a daily basis, so there's a, you know, this is rolled out to the tenants on a regular basis, so everybody knows, you know, what's going on on a daily, weekly, you know, monthly basis. Very well organized and very well orchestrated. One key part of the, of the development is the shuttle buses, and, so we have a hundred and, a hundred and eighty units, and we are looking for, you know, somewhere in the neighborhood of about a hundred and forty-five parking spaces for cars, so the tra, so, so we're keeping traffic down, and one of the ways that we keep traffic down is by having this public, you know, public shuttle bus for the residents in the community. It's part of the, it's part of the, part of the rent, and basically the shuttle bus can take them to the, you know, the local Ashland seasonal farm market, to the senior center, banking shop, in grocery drugstore, you know, whatever, you know, downtown or Framingham, wherever they have to go to the grocery store, and doctor, medical appointments, have to schedule stuff, but it's similar, I think, where you, you know, where Cirrus is just running that shuttle just to the train and back, they can run it to the train, and they, or, you know, and everywhere else that we're talking about. So it's a very, you know, it's a very, it's a very popular and a very user-friendly tool for the, for the residents.
Probably mention the train in this case, if they're making Ashland-specific push here.
The, they are, I mean, I can tell you that, in terms of the train itself, you know, we, we've looked at, you know, Campagnelli-Thorn dyke-Cirrus, and I think it, I'm not sure what the number is today, but, you know, within the last seven or eight months, I think the, the number was somewhere in the neighborhood of sixty-five people were taking the train to Boston, you know, from Cirrus. I'm not sure, you know, these are people that are retired, so how many people, you know, are gonna be commuting in to, to work is not gonna be happening, but in terms of...
You could have some people in the fifty-five, sixty-five range.
Yes, yes, correct. Yep, that are still working like you and me, and, yes, and other people possibly in the crowd, so, correct. So, I have a video here of Diamond Oaks, which I don't know if we can get it to go. I was, I heard that we could do it because we have an internet connection, so I'm gonna see if that goes, but this is, just gives you an example of, of a project that they did in Florida, in Bonita Springs, and I don't know if we can get the audio.
Is it playing right now?
Yep.
You're gonna hit play.
What's that?
You're gonna hit play.
Bottom left corner.
It's playing here, it's not, well, no, it's playing, it's playing here, it's not playing, it's, it's not playing in front of you guys, so I don't know what, I don't know.
It may not be capable of showing.
Yeah.
Technology glitch.
No, that's, it looks great, well, it looks great here. This, I mean, it's just, it's a, I don't know, Pete, can you figure that out?
Probably not.
Definitely not a touchscreen.
Yeah.
Not a next-gen screen.
Hit, hit play, again.
Attempt at humor.
It's almost like it disconnected from the screen. It may not do it.
Yeah, it's not.
Okay, so how do we get out of each, okay. All right, so we're gonna get out of that. Get out of that, and we're gonna just go into... So, Arbella at Ashland. As you know, the RTD has a zoning bylaw that allows on Lot Two for two-story townhomes that can be for sale or for rent. What United is looking for and asking for is to do a mixed townhome and town, multifamily flat apartment development, which would be completely all for rent, so there would be a total of a hundred and eighty units, a hundred and forty-four of them would be, would be flats and two four-story buildings, and then there would be thirty-six active adult townhomes. There's a hundred and forty-six total parking spaces, of which forty-eight of them are, have garage stalls similar to, to Campagnelli. So, if you look down, if you're looking down at the site, you would, at the top of the screen, let's see here, you have, up here, you have the Cirrus Apartments, which is the three hundred and ninety-eight units. That particular parcel there was twenty-eight acres. So I'm gonna show you another slide in a minute, but this, this parcel, which is considered to be Lot Two, okay, is a total of thirty-seven point nine-nine acres, call it thirty-eight acres, and the development itself, right here with the road, in this open green space in here, is approximately eighteen acres. So, one of the issues that came up when, when Gainer sold Parcel Three to the town, Mike Herbert negotiated a deed restriction on Lot Two, so that twenty to twenty-four of the total thirty-eight acres are basically gifted back to the town in terms of open green space, or in the words of the deed restriction, for municipal purposes. The intent was for, for open green space, but if you read the deed restriction, it says twenty to twenty-four acres of, for municipal purposes. So, so what we're talking about is the, the townhomes here, the townhomes here and here are as of right, they would be two-story townhomes for seniors, and then these two buildings right here, this is Building One, this is Building Two, those are two four-story buildings, which we would be looking for the zone change to go to four stories, and, and those buildings would be approximately sixty feet from, from the ground floor to the peak of the, of the roof. So, you're going from a, the zoning bylaw, which states three stories, you know, on, on average grade, we're asking for the fourth story, and we want, you know, four-story buildings. So if you were looking, if you were to look at Campagnelli's buildings, like this particular building right here, on that side of the building right there, it's, it's four stories, but it was, you come around the back of the building here, it's only three. So on the, so their average grade, you know, they, they were, they were able to get the fourth story on, because it's on a hill. We're asking for these two buildings here to both be four stories. So there would be seventy-two units in this building, seventy-two units in that building, total a hundred and forty-four, all seniors, and they would be, you know, limited to one and two-bedroom units, and that breakdown in terms of, you know, how many ones and how many twos has, has not been determined at this point. So, as we keep moving forward, we have been interacting with the Apple Ridge neighborhood, and I've personally gone out and met with several of them, and sat in their kitchens, and heard their complaints, their objections, and I'm sure you've heard them as well, the, you know, NIMBY not in my backyard, you know, we don't want this development, you know, we, it's been, it's been woods forever, and we'd like it to stay for, stay woods, we don't want four-story buildings, and so what we did is, we went out and we basically measured from the, you know, from each one of the backyards, or the, the back of, the back end of the house, to the, the building, to the corner of the closest point of the building, you know, for each of these houses to show, to show the residents, you know, what that distance is. And, you know, basically, everybody's concerned about their privacy, the tranquility, their harmony with woods, et cetera, et cetera, and, you know, the argument that we're making is that there's a fair amount of distance between, you know, the backyard and the end of the house to the corner, the closest corner to each of the buildings. What I'd also like to point out is that in the RTD zoning bylaw, when it was originally passed back in two thousand, the Apple Ridge neighbors all basically got together and they negotiated a deal with, with, with Gainer, and if you can see this black line that follows around here, it's basically, it's a hundred-foot buffer line, okay? So there, so from the property line here, from the, from the, from the existing property line in red, to that down, is a hun, is a minimum of a hundred feet, and then you'll see it, it's dotted in there, okay, that is, it goes here, but it goes, it's a hundred feet, it's a hundred-foot buffer, no disturb zone. And if you, I don't know, pressing by chance, did you get out there, did you walk it?
No, I was not able to be there.
Okay, well, if, well, if you, if you, it's still, if you, the, the buildings, the corners of the buildings are staked, and the, the buffer zone is, is identified with yellow caution tape. So if you go out and you, you can literally walk from the Tracy's house down here at the bottom of the hill, you can walk up the hill, and you can see, you know, the yellow, the yellow caution tape, which identifies the buffer zone, and as you, as you stand either in any of the residents' backyards, you, you know, you look through the buffer zone, and then you would see the houses, or you'd see the, you would, you know, ultimately you'll see the buildings. But there is the, there is the hundred-foot buffer zone, we've committed to, to keep keeping it a hundred-foot buffer zone with a no disturb, and...
Meaning, meaning the existing trees and vegetation are left as it is.
That's correct. That's right, so everything, everything that would be to the west, going toward the Apple Ridge residents, would not, would be a non, a no disturb, non-touch zone, okay? And then, you know, some of the other things that we did talk about, and from the, from the residents that we, that I, that I met with, either sitting in their kitchens or whatever, or, we actually did a site tour two weeks ago, on a Sunday, and we, you know, we marched up the hill, and, and we talked, whether it was the Tracy's, or Wilkinson's, or, you know, Peter Dana is not right on the property line, but he would be another one. You know, we talked to, we talked to these folks, and we said, listen, we would be willing to sit down with you and individually talk to you about different ways, you know, that we can shield, screen, you know, your, your view, you know, we, and there's, there's, you guys know, there's a lot of different ways that you can go about doing that, you know, from, from building berms to plantings, to abrevities, to pine trees, et cetera, but as, as a means to, you know, maintain their privacy, you know, we've said, we'll sit down with you, and we'll talk to you about that. So, you know, we're not opposed to it, and, and I can tell you from prior developments that United has done, they're big on landscaping, and so they, I think it's a, it's either a three- or a four-stage landscaping program that they have, so they're not just going in and, you know, planting in year one. They have a, they have a planting schedule for like a three- or a four-year period of time, so that thing really, you know, grows out over, over a period of time.
And who, and the development, the management company would own that plan, if you will, or does it?
Yes.
How, how's that work?
Yes. Yeah, so whatever the plan, whatever, th- they're gonna own it. I mean, they're, they're built, they're built to own, they're not merchant builders where they're gonna build it and flip it. Okay, so they wanna own these things, you know, for, for, for a long period of time. So, so the management team, you know, as I said to you, they got three hundred people there, but their, their, their intention is to, what they, what they tell you they're gonna do, they're gonna do, and they're gonna stay with it. And I, I mean, I, you know, I mean, I know the, the guys at Campanelli fairly well. Um, you know, I think, you know, you've seen what they've done up there, and they do a great job. And I, these guys, these guys would be equally to better, you know, frankly, in terms of performance.
Um, so, but, and you did give an example of a property that was built in fifteen, and that was sold in the last, recently. Um, so, when they do sell it, do they always?
They maintain, so they...
Always maintain that management? But here's where I'm going. Like, this is a thoughtful presentation, and it's a thoughtful product, right? Like, this is not just building, you know, apartments, th- there's the seven-step thing, and there's the busing, and there's like a whole layer on top of this, which makes it, you know, a nice product.
It's the management company.
Yeah, yeah, so all I'm getting at is, is, you know, buildings get sold, there's financial decisions and so forth, but at the end of the day, is there that commitment that that layer stays in there? The layer of the seven-step program and the busing and all this stuff by the management company?
What I, what I'd say to you is yes, because the, 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 the management company is the glue that maintains these people. And with all due respect to the tenants and the residents, when they move in, they're usually not, they're not moving out the following year.
Yeah.
Okay, they're there, they're there for a longer period of time. They take twice as long to rent up, but once they lease them up, the residents typically don't move out until they're going to a place we won't talk, you know what I mean? Generally speaking, but, you know, but a lot of times, the other thing that's happening is, is this, in this demographic, and what's changed because of the financial crisis back in oh-eight through thirteen, is a lot of people do not wanna get, do not wanna tie up their money and buy these, you know, like, like, for example, like Warren Woods, at the lanterns at Warren Woods. Those things are, those things have broken the seven-hundred-thousand-dollar mark now. There's a lot of people that, that don't wanna do that, tied up that capital, number one. And then number two, this is not that crowd, if you will. This is the, they, the, typically, the dual income, okay? Uh, husband and wife, both, both worked, you know, I don't know, they're, 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 they're dual income, combined income, could be somewhere between seventy-five to a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars combined. Um, they could, they're retired, they could, you know, they could be in all different sorts of walks of life, but they don't necessarily, they've sold their house, and they don't wanna own.
Yeah.
And this gives them an alternative. Or they've sold their house, and they haven't decided where they wanna go, and they don't wanna live in a Cirrus kind of environment. They wanna live with just senior, with other seniors.
With folks close in their age bracket, yeah.
And then just on that front, that, so that, so the townhomes, you know, we believe that the townhomes is for that earlier-stage group that, you know, that is more mobile, that can live, you know, go up and downstairs, and they're now, you know, these buildings, the, the bigger buildings are both elevated, um, so they're maybe not as mobile. Um, so that's, uh, you know, just something else to think about. So it's, so they're graduating, if you will, graduating up. Um, just to talk about the, the neighbors and the site again, um, elevations. Um, so I have another slide to show you, but if we look right here at the entrance to the road, which is pretty close to where Cirrus is, you're roughly here at two hundred and, um, two hundred and eighty-three feet, okay? Two hundred and eighty-eight, two hundred and eighty-eight feet here. And if you were to draw a straight line to right here, okay, you're going to, to three hundred and eighty-three. So you're going from two eighty-eight to, to, to three eighty-three. It's roughly a hundred-foot elevation, okay, over a nine-hundred-foot stretch. Okay, so it's, it's steep. Okay, it's very, it's frankly, it's very steep, and it's mov- it's basically, if you look at the topos, you'll see ten-foot increments, it's growing by ten feet. And we, and we have slides to show you that. So, so one of the discussions that's gone on has been, you know, why is the development up here versus down here? Okay, that's been a very big, you know, a big discussion. Okay, that's number one. Number two, other people have said, you know, take the buffer line that's right here and push it this way, push it east, right? And take that building and put it down here. The problem is, is that, that seniors like flat space. They don't like stairs. Average age is seventy-seven years old, and therefore, we wanna keep, you know, this becomes essentially a tabletop. It's a flat surface, the elevation is the same, okay? And if we were to move, if we were to try, if we were to shift it, and it's all based on economics with the engineers, and this is the least expensive place to build this development, okay? If you try to take it and move it from here and put it down here, okay, you're gonna have huge retaining walls here, here, and here. You're essentially gonna get a bathtub effect, and the cost to excavate and make a tabletop like it is, this is up here, and Preston, I'd love to walk you, walk up there with you sometime and just show you, because when you get up there, this is the, this is the flat area. But as you start to get down here, it just starts to drift down, down, down to the two eighty-three. And it's a steep hill, and if you're over here at Cirrus, you know, you, you, you can look up and you can see that. So, there's a reason, there's, there is a reason why it's here versus down here, and it's frankly, it's just, it's just plain economics. We don't have to build the retaining walls, we don't have the excavation. And, um, in terms of excavation, you're talking about fifteen dollars a cubic yard, and there's two problems. One, it's the cost to excavate it, and there's a second one is to get somebody to take it. And right now, we haven't been able to find anybody that would take the amount of fill that we would have to cart out of there. So, between the retaining walls and the, um, and the excavation and getting rid of the fill, that's the reason why the site is, you know, where, where it's been proposed. So, um...
Outta curiosity, what's the maximum grade on that road? Do you know?
I do not. Uh, I, I don't, I don't know the answer to that.
I'd like to know that sometime.
Okay, okay. Um, let me just see where else we can go from here. I mean, this is just a, this is, that's really not a good print. I just really wanted to show you more of a close-up of the buildings themselves, the footprints themselves. So you have, um, you know, you have the townhomes here, um, and those are, you know, there's a five bank and a six bank, and a five bank and a six bank. Then you have your, your hu- uh, seventy-two units here, seventy-two units here, and then around the perimeter, you have, you know, your parking garages, um, similar to what Campanelli has. You have, uh, trash there, you have trash here, you have the clubhouse here, which is roughly gonna be, you know, approximately uh, eighty-five to ninety-five hundred square feet. We have a dog park here, we have gardens for the tenants here. Um, we have parking for the clubhouse here, uh, one more townhouse over here, trash, and then parking along here. And then you have circulation, you know, going all the way around the road, and then down, down and out. I'm gonna show you, I'm gonna s- uh, this, this slide real-
Alternative footprint?
I'm sorry?
Is this an alternative?
No, this is the same, this is the same footprint. Um, the only, the, what I, what I'm gonna show you, but it's just, it's a different slide, but it's colored, is, um, so this, 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 this one really is supposed to show you the deed restriction area. So, the development itself right in here is eighteen acres. All this other land that wraps around, and it wraps around the back of Cirrus and goes through here, that's a total of, uh, twenty, it's twenty, twenty acres, so that gets you your thirty-eight acres. So, if you were to look at it here, this is, this is what we're, what we're now proposing to do is to try to get it up to twenty-four acres combined, which would be sixty-three percent of the total, um, thirty-eight acres, is, is we would contribute, the, the deed restriction basically says you have to have twenty to twenty-four acres of contiguous area, okay? So what we're proposing is that we would add this area here into the total count. We'd ask for an easement for the road, which we would maintain and be responsible for. But then generally speaking, all of this area here, and then all wraps up and around in the back of it, you know, would get you roughly up to twenty-four acres, which is the maximum amount that the deed restriction is, is calling for. So...
Is, is that arm that goes up and around, that's the other side of Cirrus?
That's correct. So you have the MBTA access road is going up here, and then follows down to the train station, which is, which is right there.
So, you're taking open space from the separate development on a different lot?
No, no, it's, it's the way, the way the, the way the Cirrus, the way the Cirrus thing got cut up, it's, it's, it was just, that's just the way-
That arm is part of Lot Two?
That's correct, yes. Yup, yup.
Like the cape. Okay.
So, I guess the, the, you know, one of the questions is, is with regard to the deed restriction, is what we're proposing is saying is like, look, sixty-three percent of the total thirty-eight acres is going to remain as open space, open green space. Versus, um, you know, you, you know, basically, you, you cut the baby in half, or you cut the site in half along, you know, something like that, and you build on one side or the other of the, you know, of it. And just because of the, because of the, the topography, um, it makes it uneconomical to build on the, basically, on the, on the Lot One Cirrus property line, you know, from here over. It's, it's just economically not viable to do that.
The legalities of the deed restriction are not something that the planning board would deal with.
Correct.
So, that's, that's, just for anybody watching and, and looking at different aspects of that, uh, if, if there's an issue of how the road works with the deed restriction, um, that, that's not a planning board issue.
Correct.
Clarify that for everyone.
So, just with regard to that, Mr. Chairman, um, the Board of Selectmen has organized a development liaison committee. And that, does it, that development liaison committee is made up of planning board members, Board of Selectmen, I believe Michael Herbert, Peter, um, I'm not sure who else is in that, would be in, involved in that. But I think the idea was to get to that, um, that liaison meeting sooner than later, and try to sort this development deed restriction language out. There are, you know, there are-
Representatives at Dale?
And we're hoping that that, that, um, you know, whatever you wanna call it, a kickoff meeting, um, can happen sooner than later. Where everybody knows what next week is, this is, you know, I think the beginning of summer, really. And people's summer vacations are gonna start rolling out, so we'd like to really try to get, um, we'd really like to try to get that meeting, that initial meeting going, so we get, you know, we try to bring some closure to some of these, you know, some of these issues. Um, so, um, let me just see what else I got here I can talk to you about. Um, this is just another example of the steepness of the grade, so you're down here at the, you know, you're down here at two, uh, two eighty-eight, and you get to the top of the hill, and you're at three eighty, three eighty-three, so you can see the steepness of the, the, the steep grade of the, it's, it's just, it's, it's crazy.
Steep.
It's very steep. So, um, sidebar for twelve seconds is, I, there was another handout, which, um, was, um, the executive summary from the Ashland, um, Housing Production Plan. And, um, part of that, part of that, that plan talked about affordable housing. And one of the, one of the, uh, components of this project that, that United has committed to is they've committed to make twenty-five percent of the total project affordable, at eighty percent of the median income. So if you read the current zoning bylaw and the covenant that was, that was, that was agreed to, you know, a couple of years ago between the town and Gainer, um, it was a ten percent affordable, um, requirement. United has agreed to increase it from ten to the twenty-five percent. So, if you look at the, if you look at the total unit count, you have a hundred and eighty units, which, of which twenty-five percent of them would be affordable, which means you're getting forty-five, you know, senior affordable units. But, um, because it's the twenty-five percent in the eyes of DHCD, a hundred percent of that unit count goes toward this, the, the stabilized housing inventory. And right now, you know, I don't have a defined answer, um, but I think Ashland is currently somewhere between four-point-six and five percent, and the goal is ten percent. And now, Peter, I don't know if you have an answer on that, but... Okay, but the, but the point is, is, um, you know, in my conversations with Michael Herbert, um, you know, my understanding is that we can, this development will push the subsidized housing inventory above six percent. So, um, that's a good fact, um, you know, for the town in terms of, um, getting closer to the ten percent affordable threshold, number one. Uh, number two, it demonstrates, under the Housing Production Plan, that you are building and adding affordable housing to the, to the, to the, uh, to the count. And, um, it's good for the town because you're providing, you know, affordable housing for the seniors that are looking for. And just going back to the, uh, Housing Production Plan for a second, um, if you look at, if you go in there and read it, we highlighted, um, some of the areas of that plan, which talks about, you know, what the town is looking for. And if you look at what's gonna happen between now and two thousand and thirty, the, um, the baby boomers is gonna explode. Um, and it's gonna be a significant number, and there's gonna be a huge shortage of senior housing. Both senior housing and senior affordable housing. So, what we're trying to do is, we're trying to incorporate, you know, this project into the vision for Ashland in terms of the senior housing, and, you know, create this, this, you know, you got your market-rate apartments with Cirrus, now you got a senior apartment, you know, with some affordable in it, which sort of follows in the, in the, you know, the overall, um, you know, vision for the town. Um, and then finally, um, you get your, you're gonna get your, your open acreage. Um, the development is not gonna point, put any students into the, uh, to the school system, so you're not gonna have that tax on the, you know, the municipal infrastructure. Um, the development will, um, you know, provide a means to safe harbor Ashland going forward with DHCD. And overall, you are, um, you know, we're mirroring, trying to mirror what the Housing Production Plan is in terms of, you know, providing diverse senior affordable housing for the town of Ashland.
Alright, um, you know, at this point, the, the big question for the town is, is this, i- is changing the zoning to make this happen the right thing for the town to do? And that's really, uh, where we are now, right? And, uh, this would presumably be something that would be on the Fall Town Meeting warrant. We've talked about this at, uh, at some of our meetings, uh, that we would work towards, um, evaluating and, uh, with the intention of putting something like that at Fall Town Meeting. Um, since this isn't an actual planning board meeting, because we don't have quorum, I don't wanna go, uh, into a lot of my opinions on this.
Yup.
So, uh, at this point, um, if anybody else here has questions?
Uh, can I just make one other, sort of, this is a strategic point? United's committed to the project, you know, long-term. And, um, you know, we, we have tried to get to a town meeting a couple of times and failed. You know, a lot of it has been through the fault of United, but we just haven't been able to get to a town meeting. We did try to get to the Fall Town Meeting, and we couldn't get the sponsorship that we were looking for. Um, and our concern frankly is that that's gonna happen again. And so, um, we are looking at it and saying, you know, we are looking at our alternatives to figuring out how to get the site, you know, permitted. And that, you know, that alternative is frankly, could, you know, could be a forty-B. And we would like, you know, I have actually reached out to, um, the Board of Selectmen, um, and, and Steve Mitchell in particular, and said that we would like to open a, this, a, 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 either a formal discussion or an informal discussion about, you know, pursue, potentially pursuing a friendly forty-B and working with the town. I know everybody is, gets scared of, of, of a, of a, of a forty-B just because of the nature of it. Um, but, you know, the process that we're going through now would be no different. We would embrace the neighbors, we would embrace the town, the residents, you know, the boards, and we would work with them. Um, and the, 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 the question is really, you know, is this the kind of product that the town wants in terms of the greater good? We know we can't make everybody happy. You know, we're gonna alienate some neighbors in, in Apple Ridge. But in the greater good of, of, of the town of Ashland, when you're getting senior housing, you're getting affordable housing, you're getting commercial tax revenue, you know, is this, is this the kind of product that Ashland is looking for? We were told that that's, that this is the kind of product that you're looking for. Maybe not to the scale, but, you know, we, we have always said from the very beginning that economically, if we had to go to the one-eighty, because that was the only way to make the project affordable, we had to go to the one-eighty. Um, you know, we were, between the one-fifty and the one-eighty, you know, we've, we've, we've ended up at the one-eighty just because the, the site work is extensive. And, and so, you know, what we'd like to do is, we'd like to sit down and engage in a productive conversation, a friendly conversation, and, um, and try to work through a, a deal, um, that works for the town of Ashland and works for United. So that's, you know, we, that's, that would be part of our, you know, our discussion with, uh, with the Liaison Development Committee whenever that meeting is gonna take place.
Okay. Yeah, I, you know, I, I've got some thoughts about, you know, well, could you make this little change, could you make that little change? But, you know, it, I don't wanna-
Yeah.
Yeah, I go on.
That, that, you know, because other planning board members may watch this, that then be communicating with the quorum outside of a meeting about, you know, that, I don't wanna get into any of those open meeting issues, so...
Yeah, I assume that we're gonna have to do it again anyways.
Yeah. But, uh, hopefully this is, uh, helpful for the people here and for the people at home.
Yup.
So I appreciate, uh, your willingness to do this a second time.
So in terms of d- direction, are we saying that we would do this again on July eleventh?
We've got a lot going on on that meeting, but do we've also got a tight schedule on making sure we get whatever we need so that we can get this on the Fall Town Meeting, so that- whatever we need so that we can get this on the Fall Town Meeting, so that might be a long meeting.
Right, but the, but the, I guess the point I'm making is if you're only meeting twice a month, and I don't know what your schedule is for, with summer vacations, is-
I'll have to check with the other board members about, you know, whether or not we add a, a, a third Thursday or something, but...
So, uh, my opinion, I mean, tonight was a scheduling mishap. We should've had a meeting tonight. If next meeting's a long meeting, it is what it is, like-
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, tonight was a mistake.
Regardless, we'll make ourselves available.
Yeah. But, uh, we, we will also do a better job of making sure we know which members are not gonna be available. So, uh, this doesn't happen again.
Okay, fair enough.
So, I, you know, uh, we, uh, at, at the table are kind of embarrassed that we didn't have quorum tonight, so...
It is what it is.
It is. Thank you for your understanding.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it. Appreciate the opportunity to come before you.
All right.
Any questions?
Any, any questions from the, the public?
Yeah.
All right, uh, that being what it is, or, or, or Mark, you're gonna- Mark, you got a question?
Thanks for that presentation, Tom.
Okay. Good evening. Three and almost all. First of all, having, that doing this was, was like pulling teeth, like I'm saying, cause the lack of a quorum. Another thing is, um, if anybody, let me see. I can't get an answer for this one. Is the liaison for the, for this group that's gonna be talked to, the developers and stuff like that, is that formed yet?
Uh, the committee's formed, yes. Dale is the member of the planning board who's on that committee.
Okay.
Right, there, there are no s- it, it, no, there, there are no, um, it, it's only members of, of boards and committees and town officials. It's not a-
There's no, uh, citizens outside.
There are no at-large members.
Yeah. Can I, I can't, I can't understand why for that. So, it said on, no, I can't go back to you, no, the agenda, I could be going, I'll be going on order. July eleventh. I'm just, I'm just a little perturbed that, um, at least the, a newer elected member is not here. But it would've been understandable if they did say to you, well, we don't have to know in public that one of the members couldn't make it for any reason.
I, I believe several of the members had said at one time or another that they couldn't make this meeting, and we just didn't add it all up correctly, so I think part of it is our fault. So...
Okay, 'cause I, I did watch your last meeting at home, and you did have, um, your calendar out, and nobody said they couldn't make it to the next meeting.
If it weren't for Tricia, she did say she was gonna be out of town, so, and she did.
A- anyway, let, let's not point fingers.
No, that's not, that's not, I'm not good for anybody. Okay, um, for this, I was looking, going through the, going through the shows, the PowerPoint.
Do, do you have anything about, about this presentation?
I'm formulating it. It's about the, um, the buffer and the, uh, distance. Is what's green from the back, where the black line is, excuse me, where, until the, um, very back and where the, the rain, rubber, all that, is all those trees are gonna be staying standard? Or the, or is it gonna be chopped down?
Yeah, he said, he said no disturb. No disturb means you, you're not changing the ground level, you're not cutting anything. It's all staying the same. It does look like in the buffer, right as you get close to the street, where they're putting the, the detention base, and there may be some encroachment, they'll have to check on that and make sure that they're within the rules on that.
I'm pretty certain the answer is no. There's no, we're not, we're, we're not touching, but we'll, we'll verify it.
Yeah. Uh, this, right, right next to the MBTA road, it looks like they might be encroaching on some of the diagrams they presented, but they'll, they'll have to double-check on that. But, but yeah, no, no disturb means no disturb. They're not gonna-
And then continuing on that part, um, distance is two to three times further back from the black line of the back of the, um, eighteen acre. In between is all grass, and then the hundred-foot buffer, and then all green grass trees and stuff like that, and then the neighborhoods. I wanna, I'm, I'm asking, is that all guys still be thick? So, it'd be all covering up for what be, can be seen from the back of the people's houses?
It would be as thick as it is now, uh, and if they, i- unless they go in and plant more stuff, which, you know, in, if there are particular cases where it's not dense enough, that would be something we could ask them, or the, or the neighbors could ask them, can you put in some more plantings of a given type that'll make this fill in better? I, you know, that's something we could look at in the permitting process.
And there was a walkthrough. Did you go, Joe? Preston said he didn't go.
I personally was not able to go to either, but I, I am interested in doing that, um-
The plan to go?
The coming weeks.
To answer your question, Mrs. Zonie, yes, I have walked the site on multiple occasions, uh, with the developer, and I, thank you.
Okay, and could the houses in the neighborhoods be seen through the trees and all the, all the buffer that's there?
I think that needs to be taken into account from everyone, uh, with a set of eyes who walks the site. Uh, the, the area is fairly thick, it's dense, the, uh, the, the top, the topographical grades do change quite a bit. Obviously, we did talk about that tonight. Uh, but yes, the, the vegetation, uh, is existing, it's thick. And when the trees are out in full bloom, like as they are right now in the summertime, it is hard to see through, uh, the existing vegetation.
So, you, so you're answering, if, I understand that, is, there's no full square view shoot-through? You can see all the way from their back of the houses to the development?
No.
And the elevations and all that, and the driveway, and the, um, what's that called? The deeds, that's all gonna be untouched? The green, the, the, um-
Hundred-foot buffer?
Yes, all the way to the-
He said yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
The buffer, the, well, the, the, the buffer zone will, will not be touched. Obviously, where the road has to get cut in will be touched. That will have to be cleared. And the area where the buildings are gonna build will be cleared. But as much as, as much as can be maintained will be maintained.
And, and the last thing is, senior with the housing and the house is gonna be flat in the four-story. My last, my last question is, the zoning by law varies of heights. And the last time I know about zoning by laws was with the downtown, and that was forty-five max from ground up with three stories. This is gonna be four up to sixty, think, make me?
Yeah, with the pitch roof.
Did you, was there a balloon test?
Yes.
And nobody said, nobody said anything negative or positive?
Uh, nobody said anything negative or positive. People saw it. We, we flew it last Saturday, last Friday and Saturday. I met, um, almost all the board members, the board selectmen out there, and, uh, you cannot, you could not see, I mean, stand with them.
Yeah, it'd be nice for the people at home.
I did want to point that out, is we did, we did, we were asked to do a balloon test, which we did, and we flew the balloons up to sixty feet, um, in one case, because the ground drops off in the back. We, it was sixty-five feet, but if you were to stand at the buffer, uh, the lot, the buffer zone with your back to the Apple Ridge residents and you're looking into the site, you could not see, you could not see the balloons. And we did them, we had, we had, uh, we had four sets for two, for the, for the four closest corners. And, you know, from the, from the Apple Ridge neighborhood, you couldn't, you couldn't see it.
And the very last thing, for my last combination ending here, density in, in the buffer, the trees and stuff, and that balloon testing, it's all regulation, but the neighborhood still gotta be saying something negative because it's still gonna be going forward. And this was on the agenda for tonight. No change, no forty-eight, uh, hour change. They could've been here to hear this.
But they may well be at home watching it. So, I think that's all we have for tonight. Um, thank you for coming, and, um, I wish we could've had a real meeting. Um, and thank you for people at home who are watching this. I hope you found it informative, and have a good night.